So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Goodrich, seconded by Mrs. Canfield, all in favor.
Aye.
Maura gets to vote, yes?
Yes.
So it's four, zero, motion carries. Or do we have to do a roll call?
That's the roll call.
Yeah, we think it's a roll call.
All right. It's roll call tonight because we have a member participating remotely.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Four, zero, motion carries. Do I see any walk-ins here tonight? Yes, sir, would you like to come up? And State, please come up to the table. We need to hear you when we-
Maura's got her.
We have someone remote here. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Craig Dyer, 168 Stockbridge Road, from the Situate concerned citizens. Yesterday, we sent a package of information in for Freedom of Information Act on the hazardous waste dump. And I'm here today. I'm bringing it physically so you can have it so we're, hopefully, we'll be assured that we'll get the information as fast as possible. And the reason I'm here is I know the warrant passed for the $92,000 to, we don't know it for. There's a lot of miscommunication out there. We hear, the last time we heard from the town, the town was waiting on the DEP for direction. DEP is telling us that they're waiting for the scope of work from you. We're not sure. As you all know, I think we have a team together with some lawyers, some CFL, a lot of good people that are interested in this. And so we're hoping that you will make sure that, I brought enough copies for everyone on the board of what we're looking for. It's too long to go through, I know you've got five minutes. But we're hoping that the communication will become better among us and you. We thought we were in this as a team with you, DEP and ourselves, but it just seems like we're not getting a lot of information. So we're asking for this information so we can understand where you guys are at, where, not you, because we're all part of the town, where at and the DEP's at. So that's all I'm asking. You know, and another thing, and I get, in the first FOIA request, there was this report, and these are minutes from a conservation meeting. And what's scary is when you read this, it's methane gas, this report's talking about the methane gas that was in this dump. And we can't find anywhere, anywhere in all the FOIA requests where these recommendations were met. It feels like this is in the 90s, where at the same place we were, and you guys weren't on the board at that time, we're at the same place. And we're not sure if we're all on the same page because we received a email from the State Rep. Kearney. And he said he met with someone from the town, and what the town is telling him that it's paperwork that you guys are missing. But we asked you guys to go on a walkthrough so you could see some of the debris that's on our properties. And Karen was the only one that responded, she couldn't go that day. We still welcome you guys to come see why we're concerned. What's on our property? For me, I have a test well that's on my property that no one can tell me how it got on my property. Someone told me one day, it was, it was put on my property, you know, after I bought the property. Well, the property's been in our family since 1927. The dump was there in 1935. They put these test wells in 1987. None of the aunts, none of the family members can understand how these came up. But that's for another day. All I'm asking is-
Sir, it is for another day.
How do, yeah, how do we, how do we, can we get this information in time? And by law, we should get it. And how do we come back as a group and have this discussion so we're not feeling like we're being adversarial? But get the honest answers. And I think the community needs to know more about this because this is a bigger project than it's been made out to be.
Thank you for coming in, and we will take this up at a future meeting.
Thank you.
And I know the town administrator's been working very hard on this for a very long time. So I will say that we have tried to respond to you. If you feel as though there's been a lapse at some time, then, you know, we'll, we'll work on that. But we do have to respond to Freedom of Information requests according to the law, which I am absolutely certain we will do.
Yeah.
All right.
And who do I hand this to? So-
Well, you can hand it to Lorraine.
Okay.
Don't have it, doesn't really matter.
Yeah, so-
Don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Craig, so we received copies of all-
Yeah, it's just the, I guess, the front page, we just, all right, I didn't know if you-
Well, you can hand it to Lorraine, and we'll make sure that if people didn't see it, that they will see it.
Thank you.
So we thank you for coming in.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other walk-ins? Nope. The report of the town administrator, please, Jim Boudreau?
So I got a bunch of little things tonight, so I'll go as quickly as possible. I know no one's really here to have my update, so. Water main construction is still going on on Brook Street. The water department last night was able to repair the critical valve, gate valve on Front Street, without having to shut off the water last night, so that was very good. They got it done beforehand. That was really about that we were worried was going to go. So to get that done without having to inconvenience anybody was really a good job by the water department. This is probably the last time I'll update us on the reservoir, since it's getting into the winter. But we were at 1.12 million gallons a day last week, which has down a little bit more. The reservoir level went from minus 7.55 last Monday to plus eight this Monday. So it tells you how much rain we got over the last weekend. Tac Factory pond's at 9.75, and we're still working on the pilot study down at the treatment plant for designing the new water treatment facility. COVID cases were 17 last week, up one from 16 the previous week. Our positivity rating was 1.92, which was up from 1.69. Plymouth County was at 3.12, they were at 3.11 the previous week. And the state was at 1.73, down from 1.78. So we seem to be kind of in an equilibrium right now. It's not going up, it's not going down. We are still urging people who have not been vaccinated, if you can, please get vaccinated. The CDC met today on vaccines for children five through 11. I haven't seen the news to see if that was approved or not, but we expect that to be coming shortly. Booster shots for Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson have already been approved. Pfizer and Moderna, people over 65, people with comorbidities that are susceptible to COVID, and people in employment that are at high risk of coming into contact with COVID are eligible for Pfizer and Moderna. If you receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, you are eligible for a booster period to get a second shot. It can be any one of the three. It is still recommended that you stick with the same shot, but you can mix and match COVID shots. We finally saw the contract on First Parish today. He was out there raising castings, I think he'll finish that up tomorrow, which is weather dependent. We will see finally paving on First Parish by the end of the week. I'll remind people again, once that is done, we will have the police out there. Paving tends to lead to speeding, so we will have some enforcement on that portion of First Parish coming up. Wooders Walk Clubhouse progresses, if you go down there, you'll see the siding is just about done. The walkway is in, they're starting some of the landscaping. We didn't have our update call last week for obvious reasons. We'll have another one this week, I'll get a little more for you. But you can actually start to see exactly what the clubhouse is going to look like when it's done. I've been inside, I think people are going to be really happy when we get that finished. Last week, people might be aware, we had a nor'easter that hit Situate. We'd expect 70 mile gusts, officially, we hit 87. Unofficially, Mr. McGuire, our local weatherman, had gusts of 97 down in Hemmerock. At one point, 100% of the town was completed without power. According to our National Grid partners, the National Grid oberus reported more than 300 trees that had come down or had to be removed from wires in the town of Situate alone. Thanks to National Grid and our partners at EverSource, we were able to get the majority of the town back up and running on time, on schedule, on Saturday. I felt particularly bad for some of the residents in the West End who got their power back around dinnertime Saturday night and then lost it again when the rains came through late on Saturday night. That would have driven me absolutely up a wall. Peter Dugan, our end grid liaison, we can't say enough about Peter. Peter's in all our emergency management meetings, he works with us on our priority restorations, does a fantastic job helping us get the lights turned back on and communicating to us where they are and what's going on so we can get that out to the residents. Situate Police and Fire handled an incredible volume of calls during and after the storm. The Situate DPW worked all weekend to continue clearing the streets. We knew Halloween was on Sunday night, we need the schools back for Monday. So thank you to the DPW for all their work getting the roads safe and clear. We also need to thank the town of Danvers. The town of Danvers sent us a true tree crew, say that 10 times fast, on Thursday and Friday. Three in four guys there were spectacular, we just gave them a map, pointed them in the right direction. And they did a fantastic job helping us get the roads cleared and open back up last week. So the fortunate thing is it was low tides, I would hate to think of what would happen if those were astronomically high tides. We do have high tides this weekend. There is a storm off the coast, a little too early right now, it looks like it's going to go away from us, but we will continue to monitor that and let people know what's happening when they need it. We also want to let people know, in an effort to speed restoration, the building inspector through the wiring inspector is waiving the requirement for electrical permits and inspections in cases where National Grid personnel are reconnecting services and/or performing other necessary work needed to energize customers who sustained damage from the storm last week. So if you lost the service to your house, National Grid can put that back out without having to wait for the wiring inspector to come out. It speeds things up tremendously. That waiver is good until midnight on November 5th. The food pantry open house was delayed, so that will be rescheduled, we'll let people know. We were supposed to have the auction for the fire station on Tuesday. We put that off till Thursday because of the storm. Despite not having any power, we had 25 bidders and a huge crowd show up. I am very pleased to announce that the high bid for that was $585,000. That money will now be taken to reduce the cost of the senior center and the amount of money we have to borrow and lower the burden on the taxpayers. Tuesday night, we had a town meeting. I know a lot of people were upset that we were having town meeting. These people are the reason why we had town meeting last week. We had an act on the Border Street land property to see if the town would appropriate the funds because our right of first refusal expires this week, so we needed to get that town meeting in. So I want to thank the 702 residents who showed up on that rainy windy night so we could have town meeting, and now the board will take that up tonight. Two more things, then I'm done. The new congressional districts were released today. Looks like we'll be switching back again. The town of Situate and the town of Cohasset are slated to go back to the 9th district with Representative Keating and come out of the 8th district with Representative Lynch. Not finally yet, but it would take a lot of movement and machinations to get that changed. So it looks at this point that we'll be going back to Congressman Keating. And then finally, the equipment that you see here is what we've been talking about. This is equipment that we will set up in this room that will allow boards, committees, and commissions to meet in person, yet have people zoom into the meeting and participate remotely. We had a lot of participation remotely when we were remote, but we don't fit as many people in here, and our participation goes down. So we got the equipment, it was supposed to be installed last week. Obviously, that didn't happen, and now we're chasing the company to get them to come in. But once that's installed, boards and committees that meet in this room would have the option of allowing people to zoom into the meeting without having them on your individual computers or anything like that. So that'll be a big upgrade when we get it in. So thanks to Seth for shepherding that, and we'll get that done as quickly as possible. And that's what happened tonight.
Well, on behalf of the board and all the people in town, Jim, thank you very much for your leadership. I know you were working 24/7 for the past week or so, and I know the citizens appreciate it. So to the DPW, to the fire department, to all the first responders, everybody, it was, it was amazing, amazing week. And considering how we prepare for storms that sort of fizzle out, this one was sort of the opposite.
Sort of the opposite, yeah. It's a fantastic team, and I spent a lot of time just sitting there saying, okay, okay, good, you do that. But Kevin and John and Mark and all their staff, Kevin Kelly, Mike Manzella participates. They just, they know what they're doing, and they get it done. So the board, the town's very fortunate to have the emergency management team in place.
And the Emergency Operations Center, which the governor apparently likes a lot, too.
Yeah, I did have the chance to speak to the governor briefly, I asked him for $25 million.
While you're here.
He kind of laughed, but we did get a chance to speak to the Lieutenant Governor, and I've asked if she would sit down with us when we talk about the capital plan later, we have a couple of projects that are significant funding. And I said, you know, if I could have the chance, you should give us a call. So we're going to arrange a meeting with Lieutenant Governor so we can kind of lay out some of the issues facing us from a capital standpoint and hopefully get some help.
Well, I also know that there were crews, electrical crews, from all over the place, including Quebec.
Quebec, Louisiana, Georgia, yeah, they come from all over, and those guys, they're insane. They really are the work they do. I mean, it's not-
Yeah. Under the conditions, they do it. So all I can say is, I think as a town, it went as well as it could have gone considering the PAC, the wallop that that storm packed. Anything, Andrew?
I mean, not to, but again, seeing what the DPW did and talking to some of, and talking to Kevin about his team and his just fabulous work, and I heard it from other residents, too, of how they were, oh, I can't believe what got cleared off so, so quickly and everything else, so.
We're going to be working for a while, there's still a lot to be done.
Yeah.
You know, we got the roads open, we got the main sidewalks open, we tried to clear the neighborhoods as best we could for Halloween and get the kids in and out.
So when a tree comes down, excuse me, I'm sorry, when a tree comes down that's a private property tree, but it falls on the street, you know, if you're a good citizen, I would think you would try to move it, but is-
We come and get it off the street.
All right.
So it's our responsibility to make sure that the street is safe and open. So we'll come and we'll cut it back, at least to the property line. I don't want to, depending on what the tree is, we may have to go a little further back than that. But we'll come and we'll get it off the street because we, you know, some people just don't have the means to do it.
Right.
And if we're waiting for a private tree company to come in and cut it from, it's going to be a while. So we just go and we take, we clear the streets and get them clean and get them off.
But we would appreciate it if you would help us out, if you could, right?
We'll figure all the help we can-
We wouldn't say no. And Karen?
Yeah, I just, quick picture of the emergency operating room. And you walk in, and every department that has anything to do with emergency management is there, prepped, planned, ready to work. And I have to say, you know, John Murphy, our chief of, our fire chief, is the head of our emergency response team. But this man right here is the one that holds all of the team together. And I, and I just want to reiterate what the chair has said, that you need a map. And the whole town, we've all received multiple calls about how extraordinary the effort has been, so thank you for your leadership.
Well, thank you, on behalf of the whole team, thank you.
Now can I ask a question about his report?
Sure.
You say we have lots of water, so is there a flushing stand? I mean, Kevin's here, you've been a little busy last bit, are we going to be flushing?
Possibly.
Possibly, it's getting cold.
It's getting cold. We're doing tremendous amount of water main projects, which tie up crews that have to be out there to do the inspections, they have to do the testing. We're also, we've also taken all our spare water and sewer employees right now, and they're on tree trucks just going out picking up stuff on the sides of the road. So if we can get to it, yes, we will do some flushing. We're not promising it at this point. And then what we'll try to do is we'll look at our reports from the summertime where people had complaints, try to go to those areas that had the worst complaints, flush those. We won't have time to do a complete flushing of the system now.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you.
Is that correct, Kevin?
Yep, exactly, we just, we don't have the full column.
Oh, I-
Maura? Maura, do you have any questions?
I don't have, I do have a question, just to extend my gratitude to everyone as well, as you have all said so well. But I do have a question before I get Karen and the rest of the board, I know some of us talked about it. You know, the proper way to extend our gratitude to not only the town of Danvers, but also, you know, how do we best show our gratitude to the utility crews, Jim, that came in, you know, we managed that team at Grid? Or what would be the best way, that, you know, they just did such a fabulous job.
We have a letter going to Danvers now that Kevin drafted, I signed, Kevin signed, and we're going to have the chair sign. I'd be happy to fly to Quebec. Personally, if that works out. I don't know, I'll talk to End Grid and find out what's the best way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I always wanted to go to Quebec.
Anyone?
On my list.
I was there 30 years ago, so it's beautiful. Anyone in the audience have anything they wanted to comment on? Nope? All right. I think we should move along then. I think the Housing Authority is here, I think I saw you walk in. What's, how do we do this? Do we have to, do they have to call their meeting to order, Lorraine?
Hi, Kim, I mean, I have John Dwayne, is John Dwayne here?
Yes, I am.
Calling Jill Barrisford?
Here.
Is Jill Catherine here?
Yes.
Is there anybody else from the Housing Authority Board here that I did not mention? Okay. And we should have David Stevens here? So if you want to call Mr. Stevens up to discuss an appointment to the board, and then would be fine if acceptable, both boards will vote.
Okay. And because we're remote with Maura, we do have to do a roll call. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell, tell us why you're interested in the Housing Authority? You have a very good resume, so.
Sure. I'm David Stevens, I live in town, 94 Boothill Road. I am a real estate broker, I also work in the school system as the food service director. I would love to, you know, be a part and help assist the board in, you know, overseeing the Housing Authority and assisting in getting the right people into that, into those places.
Very good. Karen, questions?
Thank you for stepping up and, and welcome to town governance. Have you been inside, now you'll be?
Inside and outside.
Yeah. I appreciate it, and I, yeah, you've got quite background, and I'm sure that. It wasn't quite clear on what happened, so you have to run again in 2022, is that how, this is just to fill the vacancy?
It's just to fill tomorrow, Jerome's vacancy until the next election, which is May 21st, 2022. And then if he's interested in continuing, he'll have to run for the election.
Okay, great.
Andrew?
Yeah, I, the one, I guess, question we almost always ask, is there anything in particular now that you say I really want to work on besides just helping some of those different folks or something? Hey, I kind of dug in, hey, what's, kind of was the impetus that said, okay, I want to raise my hand?
I mean, I have a previous relationship with Attorney Dwayne, and he had mentioned it in passing at one point. And I had, I had always thought that, that I wanted to get involved and do a little bit of civic duty as I could. So I'd love to say that I have something grand, but I don't. I'd love to fill a role and do the best I can.
Perfect. Excellent.
Maura, any questions?
I do not, but thank you, David, for stepping forward.
You're welcome.
Does anyone from the Housing Authority, the current board, have anything they'd like to say on his behalf?
I think he would be a great addition to the board, I thought long and hard. And he was certainly one of the first names that came to mind as a person who kind of has the, seems to me as someone who would just kind of care about the job and put the proper attention to it. And so that's why I thought he would be a good addition. And I just thought we'd be remiss if we didn't mention Mr. Clarence Walker. He was the tenant appointee, and he had an unexpected passing recently, so that brought a little bit of urgency to this matter. Although David's not filling his role because he was the tenant advocate.
Right.
You know, I think he deserves, you know, a mention for all his hard work in the short time that he was there. He was great to work with, so.
Well, I hope he'll be able to continue, he was very impressive, I-
Oh, no, no, he's probably passed away.
Oh! I'm sorry, oh, I-
Sorry, I'm mumbling through my mask.
No, it's the masking. Oh, I'm very sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Oh.
So are we? Obviously, the board was not aware of that, and that is a great loss.
Yes, it was.
Please extend his, our sympathies to his family.
We will.
Sorry about that. All right, well, so we need another tenant representative in the board?
We're working on that with Kathy and David Stevens.
Okay. Because there were a number of other people who seemed enthusiastic at the time.
Right.
So. Sorry. All right.
Coming up in December.
Okay. So-
Motion? Do you have your motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Move to approve an interim appointment of David Stevens to the vacant seat on the Situate Housing Authority until the annual town election to be held on May 21st, 2022, at which time the Housing Authority position will be placed on the ballot.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, seconded by Ms. Canfield. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Aye.
Mr. Dwayne?
Aye.
Ms. Barrisford?
Aye.
And Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, board.
Most wonderful ever gotten.
So next we have discussed vote, Gulf Association donation, Lions Head East 61A, also known as Zero Border Street. We have Mr. George McGoldrick, Ms. Deb Lenahan, and Ms. Marla Minier. Would you like to come forward?
This is Connor Doherty. In addition to-
His name wasn't on the list, which is why I did-
But he needs to be on the list.
Okay.
So on behalf of the Gulf Association and 418 significant donors to our cause of purchasing the Border Street East field, we are really pleased to be able to donate to the town of Situate $350,000 to the cause, to go towards the purchase. These donors were mainly from the town of Situate, but there were many from out of the town, out of the country, out of state. So it was a good effort, and we're very pleased to be able to make this donation.
Very good. Well, on behalf of the select board and the town of Situate, thank you for your efforts. I know it's been a long cause, and it's really amazing the amount of money you raised. It will help the town significantly reduce the amount of money that we have to contribute to preserve that piece of property. I'd also like to say that clearly, town meetings spoke, they spoke loudly, they spoke with their, with, by clapping, they stamped their feet. So very enthusiastic crowd, and I know there were questions about whether or not to have town meeting that night. I think there was a group of us who made the decision together that afternoon, and I think we made the right decision because the next night was much worse. So, and it was great to see so many people show up and, you know, show their support for your cause, and we greatly appreciate it and very much appreciate the donation. I think we all know how hard it is to raise money. So many thanks, and my fellow board members, if you'd like to say something?
Again, I think it's fabulous, I do have a question. I just want to make sure, from Nancy, we're, we can take money from someone from a different country, is that? No, I just, seriously, I just want, I just want to make sure that there's no, like, foreign national. I know it's coming from the group, but I seriously didn't want to get us into trouble.
Well, I suspect that's their problem, right?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I just want to double check, again, thank you, I just don't want anybody to get in trouble or anything else, because there's-
No Russians.
Okay. You know, some like, some scumball, really, oh my god, okay. It's wonderful, I just wanted to double check.
It's yours, we've got to check the exchange rate, make sure that.
Just double check it.
Bitcoin, yeah.
Yeah. But again, it's so difficult to raise money, it's fabulous to see what you folks were able to do in such a short time, so kudos.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, so as everyone is well aware, at 7:15, we'll have a public hearing to discuss exercising our right of first refusal, which I have a bunch of stuff that we'll go over for the details of going forward. But for now, what's really important is to thank you guys for stepping up, doing, making the effort to get out there and get the word out so that people were aware of this choice that we were giving out of town. And clearly, you know, 418 people reached into their pockets and 702 people showed up. So I think there's no question that there's consensus on this in my mind, as far as the community that is interested. But without your work, this message may not have reached, because we would not have come to this result. So very appreciative of your work. We've got lots to do coming after, but we will enjoy this moment and, and take a motion, which I would love to do, but I-
Ms. Curran is-
Oh, and Ms. Curran, sorry.
See, I'm the one looking at the phone, and I know that's Mrs. Curran on the phone, so. So, Mrs. Curran, have you something to say?
Thank you, guys, such a great effort, Marla and your team, thank you so much. Like everyone says, you know, hard to raise money, and certainly your passion flowed through and, and all your efforts, you know, there. So just thank you very, very much.
All right. A motion?
I am technologically challenged tonight because I can't get onto the L drive, so I would defer-
Could you give me, all right. Move to accept, motion, move to accept the donation from the Gulf Association, an amount of $350,000 towards the town, toward the town of Situate purchase, purchase of Zero Porter Street from Lions Head Trust.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And also, we do appreciate you scheduling town meetings so that this could happen. Thanks for that.
We just made it.
So the check is in my hand and.
Check goes to Nancy, cash goes to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you ever refused a backup?
Not that I know of. So, seven o'clock, we're a little bit late, but we have a public hearing to discuss vote, a poll petition move. They want to move, National Grid wants to move poll 873 on Country Way, and Jose Vasquez, the engineer from National Grid, and Kevin Cafferty, DPW Director, are here to tell us about moving the poll.
Unfortunately, due to the storm, Jose is unable to make it because National Grid has all hands on deck. But Kevin can speak to the poll petition.
It's not our poll removal, it's requested from contractors working there and then going through the channels with National Grid. We inspected it, we signed off on it, my guys all looked at it, we didn't have any issues.
Looks like the polls in the way of entry to a new subdivision that's going in, so they need to move it to get it out of.
Yeah, it looks like it's near the Egypt garage that sort of beaten up old building.
My engineer on the developer for that property, Zero Country Way or 485 Country Way, it's two properties down from that.
Right.
Owned by the Merrick family. They're moving approximately, I think it's 1250 feet, on the same property, just to.
To the left, as you look at it. So towards the Egypt store, whatever it is.
So all butters were notified, correct?
Yeah.
And we haven't heard from anyone? Is there anyone here to ask about that poll? And it's a new poll going in, I assume, right?
Yeah.
So, I don't see anyone. So can we have a motion? Do we need a motion? I think we did.
Yes, we did.
Yes, all right.
It's like the motion guide.
I'm the motion, all right. All right. Nope, wrong one.
Well, I can do it, right?
Yeah.
Move to approve National Grid Plan Number 30389676 to relocate an existing pole, oh, it's an existing pole, 873, approximately 15 feet plus or minus southeast of current location.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries four zero.
Okay. Got a minute while that happens, do you know? And they got to it?
They've told us probably about six weeks from April.
With the storm, they did.
With the storm, I don't know.
Okay.
We've worked on this since April, so.
Now it goes on the list.
Well, we have a, what?
It's only 15 feet, I was looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah, we have interview board and committee applicants. They may not be here yet because frankly, we have them scheduled for 7:30. Is Deborah?
We have a public hearing for Lions Head first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's on the 7:15, so they got to kill. 7:15.
Are you Deborah or are you?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Superior Services. If you want to go ahead with this schedule, if you're here, I can.
You're the what? I'm sorry.
It's on the 7:45 new event, Staffing Services, Superior Service.
If you can promise to take no more than five minutes.
It's up to you, yeah.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can get the capital budget done at that time.
You don't want to stay for another hour?
It's only 97 million.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Michelle, I'm the owner of Superior Services. I've been in business for over 20 years.
Michelle, what?
McKenzie.
McKenzie, thank you.
Sorry, my apologies. And I was hired from a woman to work an engagement party in Situate Harbor Community Center, and so with that, they told me I needed one day, like a permit, and also if you could add me on your staffing services as well.
Lorraine, she has all the paperwork done and.
She has everything and check references, yep.
Very good. I was just going to ask tip certification.
She's on top of everything. She's been so helpful.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, she keeps us on the straight and narrow here.
She's beautiful.
So, any questions from the board?
I have one from Oliver. I have to say thank you to Lorraine because you didn't give us all of the paper. You said all of, you would give us a checkbox if everything was in there. Because I greatly appreciate it not having 200 pages of backup to look at, so.
Oh, thank you. That's because Lorraine.
We've been agonizing for years to try to streamline our backups, so.
It was fabulous. Everything was so detailed, and I was able to follow instructions very well.
You did, and you checked all the boxes, so, yeah, I hope you find much success with our community.
I would hope so, thank you. I do a lot of work down in Situate anyways at home, so, thank you.
So Tony, we skipped to 7:45 because we, the 7:15 public hearing, so we skipped over.
Thank you.
So there's two questions for Senator Stevens.
I could read the, should I take four minutes to read them or?
Stretch it out.
I do have one question, so how long have you been?
I've been in business for over 20 years.
20, okay.
So I actually worked for 10, and then I decided I wanted to start a family at 45, and I stopped working for three years, and I said to my husband, I want to go back. He goes, I was just waiting for the day, you know, it's going to be the great mother, which I am, I'm good. But, so, yeah, I started my business up again after three years, and it's been going very strong again, so.
All right.
Very good. No problems. I make sure I follow all the rules.
Perfect.
Good.
Excellent, I was just.
Anyone, anyone else, Maura, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to approve Michelle McKenzie, Superior Services, 68 Aberdeen Road, North Quincy, Mass, to be added to the approved town of Situate cater bartender list.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Motion to approve Superior Services for a one-day wine and malt license for an event at the Situate Harbor Community Building on November 20th, 2021, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Motion by Mr. Goodrich, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
All right, you're all set.
I want to thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a great evening.
Love with your business.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We'll be in touch.
Okay. So we'll just wait two more minutes and then we'll.
I can give you some correspondence.
You do? You could?
I can do the capital. Yeah, two minutes.
Nice strategy.
97 million, I can do it in two minutes.
I'm sure you could.
So, first piece of news is the governor's office has actually, Situate has been named one of 34 cyber-aware communities. There was a virtual event, and we were listed for all the great work that our IT team has done for getting rid of all the different phishing and hacking and ransomware attacks and all the awareness and certainly all of the training and those training modules that many of us have seen and done and get alerts that we haven't finished yet. But that was awarded, that's actually, it's a big, it's a big deal because so many different organizations actually don't even do some of those, some of the training, and it can cost cities and towns millions upon dollars trying to fix and clean up the mess, so kudos to the IT team.
It makes you paranoid, though, folks.
It does.
Don't click on anything. Don't read anything. Don't do anything.
And then we have some news for Veterans Day coming up. So Veterans Day on November 11th at the flagpole at the Situate Senior Center, there's, there'll be an event at 11:00 a.m., but get there early. They said 10:45 be there, obviously, so you can get a good seat. There'll be a rightful salute, playing of taps, National Anthem, invocation, and again, that's November 11th at 11:00, right at the Senior Center. And there'll be more details, there'll be some other things coming up that the veterans affair will be talking about, Veterans Breakfast in December, December 7th, and there'll be a National Reef Across America event. More details coming, but that is likely on the 18th of December, but be on the lookout for that.
And that's our correspondence?
That's it. I got us there.
Well done.
All right, I think we can probably get this hearing. So as many of you may or may not be aware, part of purchasing Border Street, because it was in what's called Chapter 61A, it was agricultural land, so they got a special tax break for that. As part of the giving them that tax break, the town, when the property comes up for sale, the town gets to decide whether or not it wants to purchase the property, so we can exercise our right of first refusal or not, and it is strictly up to the select board to make that decision. And that's why we're here tonight to have this public hearing. It was advertised in the newspaper, and we will have to vote on this in order to complete the purchase of the property. I think Tony expressed it well last week at town meeting that certainly there is no appetite on behalf of the select board to do anything to impede the purchase of this property. Town meeting made it very clear that they wanted us to purchase the property, so we're here to take the final legal step to make that happen. Anyone have anything they want to say, need to say?
I'll just say I was impressed by the turnout. I mean, there were, what, 700 people there, and clearly the town wants to purchase this piece of property, so I'm in favor of proceeding.
Karen?
No, obviously, I'm delighted that we're at this point. I would like to have at some point, if you could tell me when it's appropriate, just some questions about, you know, after this vote, you know, what's the timeline? What do we need to accomplish to affect the vision for this property? So I don't know when that's appropriate.
Well, Town Council Cindy Amara is here. Is there anything? I think, it seems like we've got all the paperwork in order, yes?
You have most of the paperwork in order, yes. You have to sign the purchase and sale agreement and send it back to the seller. You have to file and record a notice of accepting, accepting.
Exercising.
Exercising. Thank you, I've had all sorts of different words today. You have right of first refusal when that gets recorded. You have a date 10 days from when the PNS is executed of paying a deposit, and then you have, I believe it's 90 days from the execution to pay the balance, which you have the funds already, and Cindy Amara tomorrow will have the additional 350 deposited.
Go ahead.
And the only thing left will then be a letter directly to the seller.
All of which we are prepared to do after our vote tonight.
Yes, you don't have a copy of the letter to the seller because it has not yet been drafted, and I believe.
One more question on that?
Yes.
So the actual purchase of the vote we had at town meeting was to fund through CPC. The town has not technically voted to purchase the land. Okay, they're shaking his head.
The motion, first of all, that's how we buy all our CPC property, just through the same process. The motion authorizes the board to execute the articles in the CPC. So that caveat in the motion and the article is what allows you to make the purchase.
Correct.
If you hadn't approved the CPC funds, you wouldn't be able to exercise your option because you wouldn't have the funds.
Sorry, one more question.
Sure.
I don't know, Cindy, have you seen any documentation of the promised easiness that the Gulf Association was working on, or is that some, is that still on the list of things to?
I haven't seen any documentation other than drafts of the PNS.
All right, well, that's on the list next to this.
Nancy, how do we, like, do we vote on this or sign this prior to us getting the money? Because we don't have enough money.
We got the money.
Oh, we got the.
The donation.
Sorry, in the treasurer's office. Oh, you missed, yes. They handed us the bad money.
Great.
That's why I said it would be deposited by tomorrow.
Super.
Excuse me, Serge Smith. Anyone else on the board? Maura, do you have any questions?
I don't, but I do want to thank Karen Canfield, and she brought the store attention at the onset, and Karen, you did a lot of work in the background, so congratulations to you. You know, a lot of our apprehension was the cost, and I think we all agree that it's a beautiful piece of property, so I'm happy to support the town vote.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you, Maura. Anyone else on the board? No? I saw, sir, could you identify yourself, please?
William Barton, Border Street. What is the, I understand that since the funds come from CPC for preservation of open spaces, that that land will be open space in perpetuity. In other words, the town can't do like the Ellis estate and put another fire station there or anything else there, but it is open wilderness land.
All right, I can answer that question for you. The CPC, when it buys open space, has to get conservation restrictions on the space. The conservation restrictions will be held, I believe, by Wildlands Trust, and they will enforce the conservation restrictions that the Conservation Commission stipulates. And we have one large conservation restriction with Wildlands that allows us to do certain things. It would not allow us to build a fire station, it would not allow us to do a lot of things, but it would allow us to do certain things under the conservation restrictions that are enforced by Wildlands Trust, and we pay them to do this on behalf of the town. So I assure you, and it will also be under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. So there are many safeguards to make sure that this will be in perpetuity, open space. How you define that, you know, some of our open space, we've got community gardens. Some of our open space, we have trails on, so, you know. And we're hoping that the Gulf River Association will, as promised, help us build a small parking lot to allow people to have access to the land, because obviously, at this point, when you're coming in from Situate, it's a very windy road, and it'd be dangerous for people to be walking on that. And we would like to have people have a little off-street parking, but, you know, those are details to be worked out, and those will be worked out with the Conservation Commission along with Wildlands Trust.
Thank you, Ms. Conlin.
Welcome. Any other questions? So? Do I hear a motion?
May I? I might, please. I move that the Select Board exercise the right pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 61A, to purchase the property referenced as Lion's Head East Zero Border Street, being designated on Town of Situate Accessor's map as parcel 613, and authorize Town Council to prepare all necessary documents to effectuate said purchase.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Parn?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
Five, zero, motion carries. And that's all we have to do tonight, right? We'll be signing documents tonight, the ones that we have, and we'll keep this process moving forward. No one wants to see if anything happened, but that the right thing happened.
Can I make one note on the?
Yes, you may.
Obviously, we don't have a lot to do, but I, you know, there was such an enthusiastic crowd that night at town meeting. A young man owns a site company. I haven't had a chance to tell you guys this, I'm just going to let you guys know. Approached us after the meeting and volunteered to donate time and equipment to build a lot. So obviously, there's a lot of municipal red tape that we have to do to figure it out, but I just thought that it was extremely generous of him. And I won't name his name because we have to go through a lot of process before him, but I just wanted to note that you're out there, we appreciate it.
We do, very much.
I have a question for the historians. I understand that the attendance was 706 citizens of Situate, and that that was the largest attendance for a special town meeting in the history of Situate over 400 years.
We've had.
For special town meetings.
Special?
We've had special town meetings related to schools that had more people. Schools always, they turn up by the thousands. We have them in rooms.
I guarantee, if that's Jody McDonough, she will look it up.
But it was clearly, especially given the weather, clearly a wonderful turnout. So we thank everyone who came to town meeting that evening. And thank Ms. Verbine for moving the question.
My role in this town.
Well, someone's going to do it, Ann, and you're so good at it. So. All right. Shall we move on to our next agenda item?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mara?
I'm sorry, but I do need to leave the meeting. I just wanted to let you all know. Thank you very much.
Very good. Have fun in Iowa. She's leaving the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Just to say for the record that actually I did represent your community preservation committee for many years.
I remember. And you left as I was coming on.
So I am kind of pleased that this didn't turn.
Thank you for coming.
So there's just one of those two pages that you sent me? Yes. Kathy wanted to certify the vote. We need to certify. We'll do that tomorrow. Just wanted to share. Then I just came to run to you. In case you haven't heard from me already. Exactly. So just these two pages. Just take a quick one.
So we have two interviews tonight, and we're a little bit early, but that's all right. I think maybe there is a Deborah Chicarini. Did I say that correctly?
No, it was supposed to say.
Look at that.
And Matthew Zeremba, perhaps? Would you both like to come up? I think you're applying for the same committee. The Situate Harbor Cultural District?
Yes.
Could be fellow committee members, so it's nice to meet.
Yeah.
So Deborah, would you like to tell us about yourself and why you're interested in this committee?
Deborah Chicarini, 46, Surfside. Was here about one year ago, almost exactly. But, you know, my whole career, 30 years, has been in public service. So I understand the need on committees and boards. I was an assessor in my previous town for many years. So when I came here, I mean, obviously, I'm retired last year and just wanted to give back. Lovely community, enjoying it so much. It's so diverse with all its coastal areas and downtown. Just, it's perfect for me.
It's a busy place, isn't it?
It is a busy place. A lot going on.
Send it out of your purse drawer.
Yes. I survived. But, so, sure, you know, I have time and cultural council. Also, I've been, you know, there's a few others, I guess, that, you know, they're looking for people, so.
Questions from the board? Andrew?
Well, I also, so you're also on the website committee too?
I was.
This is good. This is all good.
It's a town, you know, childhood, lots of disturbance, so actually, I think it's about the same size.
This is, no, because I thought there were some rumblings of the cultural committee doing more innovative things online, so it could be a perfect, but no, again, the resume, your, the background, thank you for coming forward and stepping up. It's fabulous, and it's a great committee.
I know. No, don't worry at all. Happy to do it.
Yeah, I just, a question other than wanting to give back. What, is there anything specific to this cultural committee that you actually want to do?
Particularly, I know that the town seems to have, you know, from afar, I've watched, you know, for a whole year now, different things that you have for gatherings. And also, there's some talk of the community center down, along with the yacht club. Some talk of redoing it or having some other uses, or, so I thought that was interesting as well.
And that's actually a new committee that's working pretty hard right now, so.
It's nice.
And they have a representative from cultural.
The cultural district.
To work with and kind of.
Oh, I see. Yes, it's a separate committee.
It doesn't mean you can't participate and go to their meetings, and they've been doing them on Zoom, I think, lately, so.
Next one's on Thursday.
Yes, there you go, Andrew.
I mean, I love the, is it the first Fridays?
Yes.
And the Halloween and Christmas and just the whole water, the harbor atmosphere is beautiful.
Yeah.
It can bring people in for sure. And I think that's what you want, but you want to keep it manageable as well, so it's just lovely downtown. I'm just interested.
Glad to hear it. Ms. Canfield?
Question I'll ask, hopefully, if you had a chance to talk to any of the members that are currently serving on the council, and just get a sense of the work that they're on. But you touched on a bunch of things that are really, in my view, is a real opportunity. So we have the harbor cultural, I always get them wrong, so. That thing, the district, the harbor cultural district, they have the, as you mentioned, the Pier Forty, it would be a former Pier Forty four community project. We have a visitor center that is stepping in, we have chambers, we have the downtown. There's a lot of players working really hard, and that synergy can be really great. So, you know, I always encourage every board to not just silo yourself, but, you know, you've got everybody around in the right direction, you know, you can do stuff. Great?
I know how difficult it was.
Thirty-nine, because I'm a neighbor.
Well, it's also a great way to get to know people.
Well, absolutely. That's what I was thinking as well. So, anyway, I would.
So Matthew?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Like to tell us about yourself?
Yeah.
And why you're interested in this committee?
Sure. Matthew Zeremba, 21 Eisenhower Lane. Grew up in Situate, was away for a long time. My family, we moved back in January, my wife and my two little boys. It's good to be back. By day, I'm a marketing director in the fashion industry. I'm also a visual artist, different mediums, recently in the Boston Globe with a feature. I've got my hands very much in the arts. And reconnecting with people like Marie Flaherty from the committee and for the board. See so much potential in the harbor district for public art, for community engagement, especially with the youth, bringing in some tech elements to share the history of the town and the district in new and exciting ways. And I think my marketing background, my visual arts background together could hopefully benefit the community.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yeah, you answered my question right there.
Karen?
Welcome home, and thank you for raising me in. I have long been looking for somebody to spearhead some of the public art, because there's, you go around the different communities, it really makes an impact, and just down the street, they did their halls, and so I have absolutely no talent in the field, so thank you for stepping forward.
Again, a very impressive, you know, list of things, but also just having that eye, that artistic eye is going to become so critical for so many different projects moving forward and what they're doing and accomplishing and telling, as a marketer, telling the story and getting folks to engage on that. So I think it's a perfect skill set as we move forward. So yeah, thank you for being involved.
So, Lorraine, how many openings we still have, or we haven't voted?
Up to 11.
Up to.
Yeah, we have plenty of openings.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, both Deborah and Matthew wanted to be on other commissions as well. This is, this particular committee is not created, it's monthly or that frequently, unless there's a particular project going on. And Deborah expressed she had an interest in being on the Beach Commission and Coastal Advisory, but we have no openings at Coastal Advisory. We do have openings on the Beach. And Matthew expressed an interest in also being appointed to the Massachusetts Cultural Council of Towns that are good. So if you would consider that, they would like to be appointed to both.
And that's all right?
That's fine.
It's doable.
As long as they're fine.
So do we want to vote now? Do we want to wait? And we have some other votes to take, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, then why don't we wait until we're?
Yeah, I'm ready to vote the cultural council, but I don't, I want to, I don't even know what you just said about the other committees.
What I said was Deborah's interested not only in being appointed to the Situate Harbor Cultural District Council, but also she would like to be appointed to the Beach Commission.
Right.
And Matthew, in addition to the Situate Cultural Council, I mean, in addition to the Harbor Cultural District, the name is so similar, I'm sorry, would also like to be appointed to the Situate Cultural Council.
The Massachusetts Cultural?
I think I looked at that as another opportunity potentially, but I'm most interested in the Situate Harbor.
The Harbor, okay.
Cultural District.
They both work together, and there's representatives.
Yeah.
And neither one of them are heavy lifting. I don't mean heavy lifting, I mean, they are what you want to make of them.
Yeah.
They don't meet every week or every month.
Yeah, my mother was on the cultural council.
Okay. So are you still interested in the cultural council?
I think at this time, interested only in the.
District?
District, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, are you still interested in being on the Beach as well?
Yes.
Excuse me. So what is the, let me take a look at that real quick. So there's two openings.
There's two openings, and, did you receive a letter from one of the commission members yet, Lorraine, on the Beach Commission?
No.
I received a call, there will be another opening. There's a family situation, so that group is just reconstituted, it's only met a couple of times in its new form, so it's a good time to jump in. And I don't think there's anybody from North Situate currently serving, so we try to.
Especially DJ, I was going to ask.
Yeah, I don't think there is. So, good group.
And you live so close to it.
Yes, I do.
So, we've done the interviews. We could just move on to the capital plan, I suppose, and then?
Yeah, we'll vote later on Tuesday.
Okay.
It's on your new business, and we'll be voting, but it sounds like, don't hate to worry about anything.
Yeah.
Don't sit on the edge of your seat. It's the low chair.
You know, I'll sit next to it. Oh, is your laptop not working? Hold on a minute. I'll be short.
Why did I do that? I knocked this off down?
Watch paper, you watch your. That could be a different issue.
No, it's okay.
I feel, I like this. You know, I like this. This is good.
Oh, boy.
As long as you don't kill me in the process.
All right, here we go.
All right, you're going to get the tall one.
Thank you.
Now I got to pump my mouth.
That is really low.
It is really low.
This is like a bad episode of Seinfeld.
Nothing's going to happen here.
Hank, that was an OSHA violation.
Sure was.
Oh, my back.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
So, Mr. Boudreau?
Yes, sir.
We're here to review the capital plan. It's more of an overview, yeah? It's not?
This is just kind of what's on it. Put on the board's radar, start the board thinking about how we're going to pay for some of these things. I don't know if we can go through the slideshow, you have it.
Yeah. We have time, let's do it.
So just to throw some numbers at you, the five-year capital plan has over $310 million in capital requests. This year's was $127.8 million, of which $96.7 million is recommended. Significant investment in the water system, the $50 million for the new water treatment plant is recommended on this year's capital plan.
I'm sorry, you said 50 or 15?
50.
Five, zero. Thank you.
50 million is the big one.
Yep.
INI, the $4 million INI study, which according to our DPW, if completed, will potentially give us enough capacity to sew in North Situate. So that is on the plan. Technology investments, water investments, significant forshore investments, and I can touch on those a little bit later. If you want to go to the next one, Nancy. This breaks down what the requested capital plan components are. You can see, water infrastructure is big, new buildings, 27.39. That includes $85 million potentially for a new school. So that's on the plan. Next slide, please. This is where it breaks down for next year. Water infrastructure and forshore are the two big ones. There are significant capital improvements for the schools and the facilities, including a new roof at the high school, I think.
Jenkins High School.
Jenkins High School, as well as other opportunities in school. One of the things that they placed on there was new sink and sink repairs. We think we can get that as a COVID, not an opera, but a COVID reimbursement. We're checking on that, so it's not on the plan, but we think we can do that through COVID, and we're waiting to hear on that.
Before we move on, quick question. All of the, everything I've heard is assuming no outside funding?
This is requested, oh, this is requested.
That's requested, and the next one is, that's the total cost, so $15 million, and then the total FEMA cost, except for the projects that are already.
The FEMA ones are at 25% town share only because they're obligated with FEMA, so we should get our 75%. Everything else?
The Cetera Point is at $7 million. We're assuming, it's a $17 million project, $10 million is the max reimbursement, so we're assuming max reimbursement, so that's at $7 million. The big one is the Ocean Side, which is a $16 million project that is tops on our forshore list, that is not approved yet by any of the state, will apply for grants on that, so that's in at the full $16 million. We could get up to 75%. That is critical because as the board knows, the water, the sewer pumping station is right there in Sand Hills, and everybody remembers the picture of Paul Will going out there in a rowboat a couple of years ago to get to it, so. But that is not on anyone's list for reimbursement yet, so that's at the full $16 million on the plan.
So, for the water infrastructure, so that's including the, so $50 million for the new water treatment. And is that approximately all of that 61, or like, what's the?
Yeah, are there numbers? These percentages are a little bit.
Yeah. Section 5 of your book lists all the projects that are recommended. So for water, the other recommended is six.
On the PowerPoint, there's no numbers, just general numbers?
Just general numbers, no PowerPoint.
You just have percentages?
General numbers as you go through.
But this is just percentages? We're looking for?
Yep.
There's no numbers, right? There's no dollars in it?
So you're jumping ahead. This is going to be the big question for the board as we go forward, particularly on the water treatment plant. We know we have to do it. It is moving forward. If you've been to the water treatment plant, it is not suitable for our current needs. As we've talked about, there's only one of everything, so two years ago, we had to replace the sand filter. We had to do it in January, we only had a month before demand would come to the point where we had to turn the plant back on. We just made it under the deadline. In fact, when we got there, DEP said, well, we want you to do this new set of testing, which they never made us do before. And I said, okay, but if nothing happens, we'll be out of water in 12 hours. So you sent me something in writing, and they said, oh, yeah, I guess you can turn the plant back on. That's how close it was that we were running into. So the plant needs to either be completely replaced, or as has been discussed, you build a second plant with one of everything, and then go back in the existing plant and completely rebuild it, so you have redundancy. You change the order of the treatment. This came up with Andrew and I, and I wasn't actually with us, when Andrew and I toured This came up with Andrew and I, and I wasn't actually with us, when Andrew and I toured the plant. So, every year in the late summer, we have a problem with TTHMs. And those are byproducts of chlorine interacting with organics in the water that cause these TTHMs. In our system, the water comes in, it mixes with chemicals, goes into a flocculation and settlement tank, where the organics will start settling out. That's where our chlorine gets added, why there's still organics in the water. If the plant was designed as a new plant, you would have a large clear well at the end, which would, you add the water there, there would be no organics for the chlorine to interact with, and you wouldn't be creating TTHMs in the system. So, the way our plant is designed actually causes part of our problems. And I don't want to spend too much time on that. But the board is going to have to have a long discussion, a long decision as to whether or not the treatment plant will be funded through the rates or through the tax levy, which would be an override. As part of that discussion, we will have to discuss forshore, because if all the forshore plans that we have currently proposed come at the same time, they cannot be accomplished under the levy. They would just choke us. So, would we do that? Would we space them out? Really, the ones that will come up fast are the FEMA projects. These are from four storms ago, some of them. Repairs, $22 million total, I think, for the FEMA repairs. We pay a quarter of that, which is between $5 and $6 million. So, this shows the water treatment plant supported by the Water Enterprise, Nancy, or by...
Yeah, borrowing is supported by enterprise fund receipts.
Okay, so that would just switch with the borrowing, supported by the tax levy, if we decided to go that way. I think that's a longer conversation, there's pros and cons to both, but that is a conversation the board's going to have to have as to how they want to fund that. Next slide, please. This gets into some of your numbers, where we have, we actually had a very high free cash number this year, so we are very aggressive in what we're proposing for cashing projects out. We did have some good retained earnings in some of our accounts, so we're using those to fund a lot of it. The address is the town share, legacy FEMA subsidized forshore repairs from Sandy, Nemo, Juneau, and Riley. Again, that is the $22 million in FEMA projects. One of the issues, the two issues with that, one is they are up for extension in December. Those plans have been taking a while, especially Third Cliff. Third Cliff has been held up because we've had to do additional modeling for CZM. If FEMA says, "No, we're not extending," then we're done, we're not going to spend $22 million, our own money. If they do extend, and some of those projects have actually been to bid, others are being prepared to go out to bid, and some of those repairs, again, are nine years old, and we just are waiting to get to them. Next one, please, Nancy. This is the forshore on the roads. We did the roads again, continue to do that, support it through the operating budget, plus the capital plan, plus Chapter 90. The other thing, we're getting a lot of roads done, is on the water projects.
So, Jim, do we have a list of roads that we're targeting?
Yeah, I can get it from Kevin.
Kevin has a list. Can he give it to us for our next meeting, so we've got it?
Figures he's not in, huh?
And on the FEMA projects, you said that some of them are quite old in terms of they've been, you know... We hopefully will be having a presentation coming up that I had asked...
First meeting in December, yep.
Because I think that some of these things go back so long that if anyone remembers them, I don't know who they might be, other than the people who work in Town Hall, but, you know, just to remind people what kind of FEMA money may be coming our way and what the actual projects might be.
Right, and they will talk about the, what I call the legacy projects that are repair projects. And then Oceanside is new, Cedar Point is new, but we still have the Minot Sand project that is out there, and any other projects. The resiliency for the harbor study is on the capital, that's $400,000. That's been recommended to come up with a plan for flooding in the harbor, so that will be talked about. All those things will be talked about.
Thank you.
I think that's December 7.
Seventh year.
Yeah, first meeting in December. Waterways, two projects, dredging. What was the other one, Nancy, remember?
Yes, the pump outflow.
Pump outflow, additional pump outflow over by the state ramp. So, we have two pump outflows in the town. Next one, please. Water Enterprise, $50 million for a new treatment plant, $6.3 million for the Hammerock Water Main Replacement Project. That isn't designed now. And then they requested $2 million for pipe replacement. We just gave them $3 million at the special town meeting. So, with everything else going on, it's really hard for them to even have the bandwidth to do that. There are several well projects, the Dolan Well Field, and then some projects to revitalize and repair wells and get them all back up to shape. We do have, sorry, Nancy, go ahead. That's your debt. Sewer Enterprise, the same thing. The big one on that is the INI project of $4.26 million. They anticipate that that will give enough capacity for North Cituit. So, as we get into that project, if it's as successful as we think it is, then we'll be back either next year or the year after, looking for money to start designing and getting ready for the North Cituit project.
Is the, I'm sorry, I mean, is there a number that makes that definitive? That it's, yes, we do it, like, is there, if it's $5 million, does that get us to that we're guaranteed that there's enough INI?
So, if I recall correctly, North Cituit is about 125,000 gallons to pick up North Cituit as developable. So, if they develop it based on the zoning, it's about 125,000 gallons a day. When Kevin and Will were in, I believe they said the INI would pick up over 300,000 gallons in capacity, so... Yeah.
Now, we had sort of a dry winter last winter, right?
Yeah.
Which, I mean, if we have a really bad winter down there, that should tell us something.
Again, Cedar Point, we need to run that out probably a full year before we can say definitively that this is the number we're getting in the INI.
Yeah.
We do think it's much, much higher than what we anticipated, just because of what we found out there, the conditions that we found out there. But, you know, Will keeps pointing out, it's been a dry summer, so that's going to impact it. He really needs a good 12 months to get a definitive number, but we're really confident it's going to be significantly higher than we thought it was.
That's good news.
So, you do have in your packets all the numbers. The forshore really is the big nut besides the water treatment plant. We also have just, just under $6 million, Nancy, in OPERA funds.
Yes.
Which we will have to look at where we want to put those. They can go to water, sewer projects. It might fit perfectly on the Hammerock project, and we just cash that out instead of borrowing money, or we could use it towards the treatment plant. I've been looking at the House bill on the OPERA funds. It looks like Representative Kenny got us $100,000 for the treatment plant design. There's $50,000 in there for the reservoir project, which we didn't ask for, I'm not sure where that came from. I haven't gone through the whole bill. He didn't mention to me, he thought he got money for the harbor resiliency study, but I haven't seen it. So, but there's $100,000 there for the design of the water treatment plant, which we've approved, I think, $4 million for already.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, there's a lot to digest there, but those two big, the two big nuts are water treatment plant and forshore.
So, on the water treatment plant, we could do a combination, right? Rate increase and override?
Yeah.
I'm just frowning, sorry.
Sorry.
Nancy wouldn't want to do it that way just because it's...
Oh, she doesn't want to do it that way.
It's not...
Andrew, if you do it one way...
Transparency-wise, it would be very confusing for a resident to know their exact impact.
And when I joked...
I'm a black and white kind of person.
Just asking the question.
When I joked earlier, I asked the governor for $25 million, that's what I asked for it for.
Okay.
I said, "Can I get $25 million in OPERA fund for the water treatment plant?"
Send him all the press clips about all our water problems.
His response was that his administration had recommended a billion dollars in OPERA funds towards water and sewer infrastructure, but that is not what the legislature is putting forward at this point. But there are additional OPERA funds coming. This is not all the OPERA funds. Karen probably knows better, but from what I understand, they're kind of holding back some of the OPERA funds, where they wait for the infrastructure package to come out, to see what that's going to cover, and then they'll use the OPERA funds in a different direction. They don't want to kind of double-use money, so there is another chance. And again, I did have the opportunity to grab Lieutenant Governor and ask if she would meet with us on some of the stuff, and we're going to set that up very shortly, so we can sit out there and say, "Hey, look, this is, you know, we have all the problems every other city in town does, and then we have the ocean."
Right. Ms. Campbell?
I had a whole list of questions and answers from all except one. So, one of the things, just doing the, in the whole charter review and trying to wrap our heads about the break process, do we have somewhere, it's probably Nancy's question, a reconciliation of the things that have been capital investments that have been done in the past that have, you know, what their status is? Like, we, you know, because we know just...
Do we have a reconciliation, like a list saying, "This is done, this is done, this is done"? Probably not that way, but Nancy has a list of...
Section 6, outstanding...
And then, and then you get an article, we have a capital article that says, "We're going to take $2 from this one, and $3 from this, and $8 from this, and we close out those projects." So, she has a list of what's been spent, but it's not like, it's not in the manner that you're asking for, if that makes sense?
No, that, I think that would, that would...
But if you ask her for any particular capital project, whether it's been completed, she could go through and say, "Yeah, no."
Yeah, we just come across that, and we're like, "Oh, we said we're going to do that, we didn't," and I just don't want another magnitude of that.
Yeah, the debt authorizations, there's very few debt authorizations that are still out there. We rescinded most of it.
And the, not, have, are we having updated for coastal officer, or is that...
No.
Yeah, okay.
No, we've hired someone.
Breaking news here at Town Hall.
They are moving up from Virginia, I think, and they'll start beginning of December.
And the reason I asked that is...
But you can't speak to them yet, because they're not on board yet.
We mentioned the Sand at Minot as one of those projects. It's obviously the bandwidth of trying to do that is something that would fall into that person who's out there.
And again, that's a conversation the board's going to have to have, that that's a project that, the last time I looked, was in the $10 million range, and it will eventually go away.
Right, the permit's got to be on...
Not just the permit, but when you do the project, eventually it will go away.
The Sandhill go to Duxbury is where it will go.
So, we'll have to have a long conversation about it. It's supposed to be, I think, a 10-year last.
It's designed to go down the coast.
Right, so Egypt Beach will get a little sandier and...
Sand hills will get a little sandier.
When we get ready to do that, or get ready to apply for grants or fund it, then the board's going to have to have a long conversation about, do we want to spend $10 million on sand that's going to wash away, or $10 million on more solid revampment that's going to last?
But we can't have those conversations.
Well, I mean, Kyle is on, up to speed on that. That's probably his pet project right now, that and the harbor resiliency. So, he's pretty much up to speed on it, but really, we need that coastal officer to kind of shepherd those and keep a thumb on them.
I look forward to reading this.
There is also $100,000 for beach repairs from the facilities report and the ADA report, and that will be some of the stairs at Minot and a whole list of things.
I appreciate that, yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, there's almost too much to comprehend, so we've got to, you know, all these are needs and all these are great projects, but we cannot hit the taxpayer with all this stuff. They'll...
I mean, on the forshore ones, it's uncertain when they would hit, so you could probably move some of those off this year. Not the legacy projects, those are going to have to stay because we need to get those done, but they're going to hit eventually, Tony.
Yeah, it won't pass. You can't have all these large ticket items coming to the taxpayers. They can't afford to do it. Your tax, your water rates will double, your tax rates will go up tremendously with overrides for school, water treatment plant. You know, we've got to really look at it and understand it, because it's, these are big, big, big numbers, bigger than there's ever been in my 20 years of doing it.
That's not a school?
Yeah. Well, school's in it. You can't, can't ignore the school as part of it either.
I'm saying, in terms of a project, that's probably about the only bigger project.
No, I mean, the whole big, the whole, you know, you can't do $200 million worth of improvements in a town in a three-year period.
Unless there's a ton of money coming from federal government, so...
The, so, I guess, two questions. One, what's the process, if there is one at all, for any of these open capital that haven't been spent in six years to be taken off? If there is a formal process?
We send, we send notices to all the departments with open capital projects annually, semi-annually, once or twice a year.
Every time there's a town meeting.
Saying, "You have these projects, can we close these projects out? What's going on with this project?" So, we're pretty aggressive with that, but for the most part, depending on who it is, you can't just take it away from them without...
Well, you can try, but it doesn't always work.
And Capital Planning Committee specifically asked for that list, so when they need the departments, they can ask them, "Why won't you let this money go?" Or, "Where's this part they're going?"
"Why haven't you spent it?"
Right.
"Why haven't you spent it?" The, and then, am I, would this be a mischaracterization? Again, this is just for us to think about the importance of the new water treatment plant. I mean, because of the lack of redundancy, there is a chance that the state, we may, again, we're going to be forced to do it at some point, right? So, I mean, if the redundancy issue does not... Could the state come in and say, "Hey, you have to do something because you don't have a backup?"
Yeah, not, I don't think because of the redundancy, but the continued TTHM problems. They will give us a consent order, which they did this year. They said, "You must correct this. If it keeps happening, they'll say, 'Okay, you need to do something physical to correct this.'" They won't say, "You have to build a new treatment plant." They'll say, "You have to do something, construct something to stop this from continually happening." The consent order is actually good for us because it puts us a little further up on the list when we ask for money, but we really are going to need, you know, we've been banging on our congressional delegation, we've been banging on our state delegation, that we need not low-interest loans, not zero-interest loans, we need cash, hard cash for these projects.
I was just thinking, the cost of it, if we waited four years, is going to be astronomical versus trying to address it as soon as possible.
Yeah, any project you wait on, the cost is going to go up.
Yeah.
And now, this might be the worst time, if you bid it right now, I'd say it's probably the worst time to bid a project like that, so waiting a year, six months, I mean, or probably at least 18 months before you're not looking to bid that. So, you hope the supply chain issues that COVID is causing would be gone by then, the driving premium costs. Our water, Water Main Project contract that just went out and bought all his water pipe because it's becoming scarce, you can't get pipe anymore. So, he's buying his pipe in advance so that we can get the projects done without running out. So, if you told me you wanted to bid the water treatment plant now, I'd say, "Wait." But historically, the cost of the project will go up.
Anyone else? Well, I personally think it's good we have this all down on paper, so that if it, if some of this money does really come through from the federal government and the state, that we're ready to go with some of these things and that we've identified the needs, so...
We've met with, we've talked to Representative Lynch's office about it. I sent it all to Maki's office. Obviously, we gave it to Representative Kenny, Senator O'Connor. We'll talk to Lieutenant Governor about it, but, I mean, there's billions of dollars in federal money that's coming out, and you can't think of anything more important than a water treatment plant for what municipalities do.
Perhaps Congressman Keating would like to make a mark.
He's off my list to go off.
We review this in February.
That's when the Capital Planning will make its recommendations to you. You're free to review it at any time that you want.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, after you've, it's going to take a little while to digest, and then we can talk about it again at another meeting. This is just kind of...
I think you really need to see the tax impact.
Yeah.
You know, it's, percentages mean nothing, dollars mean more, but tax dollars mean everything, the water rates, you know, if we...
We have that.
And how you want to package it, and what projects you want to bring together at what time.
And like Andrew alluded to, you know, we're going to have to prioritize. It all can't be, you know, a 2022 override. It's going to have to be waters, motion board, I mean, sewer, school, whatever that has to be.
And the OPERA funds have a deadline on them for expenditure.
I mean, with the forshore, even if you authorize it, it's not real clear when you would start spending those. The Army Corps has pushed up the Cedar Point, but I don't think they've engineered it yet. They said they've got a design, but I think that's just kind of, you know, "We'll put it here, and it'll be this long, and this is what it will look like." I don't think it's, you know, the actual nitty-gritty engineering. That was a three-hour call, two and a half, three-hour call.
It was fun. I've got it up, and I'm now going to another slide in my drawer, it says $17 million.
Yeah, with them.
Yeah, I mean, the thing we have to remember is our capital needs just for running our town are going to, I mean... town are gonna, I mean, we max out those every, every year to meet our budget. So everything that we're doing beyond that is override, or, I mean, whether it's due to water rates or something, but it's some additional tax dollars.
We try for the most part to, to match borrowing, okay? So we don't want to keep just adding, adding up debt on those books. So we try for the most part to try to meet when things are coming off or, you know, a little bit dovetail. But $50 million, there's, there's not $50 million coming off in one fell swoop, that we'll be able to get back up to it, so.
When it comes to the forshore, it just, the FEMA projects have been kind of like a stepchild. They've been in their own silo, and they haven't been reflected on the capital plan. So it's like, we need to get everything on the capital plan, so we can decide what the priorities are.
That's why we put, these are your immediate projects coming up. How do we want to go forward?
I'm gonna go try to find a grant.
So have a nice night's sleep.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? They're all looking like, no. All right.
Is this the, is this the fire station?
Yes, it is.
Oh, nice. Still has the tie back.
Please do.
So, next on our agenda, new business, discuss vote, one-day liquor licenses, Mulaney's Fish Market, November 6th and 13th, 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. for private event.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We can, we don't need to do world call now, because. Discuss vote, board and committee appointments. We have Situate Harbor Cultural District, Coastal Advisory Commission, Commission on Disabilities, Traffic Rules and Regulations, and I see the motion sheet here. Ms. Canfield, since your computer wasn't working, now you have hard copy.
Yes, I'd be happy to move.
Thank you.
Moved to accept Deborah Sekerini and Matthew Zeremba to the Situate Harbor Cultural District for a term of two years until the successor is named in completion of conflict of interest law, online training in 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, moved by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint Deborah Sekerini to the Beach Commission for a term of three years until the successor is named in completion of the conflict of interest law, online training program within 30 days.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint Jen Foley to the Coastal Advisory Commission for a term of one year until successor is named in completion of conflict of interest law, online training program is completed within 30 days.
Move by Ms. Canfield.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor? Aye. Four, zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Megan Summert to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years until the successor is named in completion of conflict of interest law, online training program is completed within 30 days.
Second.
What, are you trying to confuse me?
No, she's fabulous. She's fabulous.
Enthusiastically seconded by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries.
Move to reappoint the other fabulous, Alan Bangert, Dorothy Cook, Taylor Williams, Sean McCarthy, and Captain William Sisisto to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year until the successor is named in completion of conflict of interest law, online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, second by.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, motion carries. Discuss vote, renew drain layers license, SLT Corporation, TruX, and CC Construction.
Move to approve, to renew, move to approve the renewal of a drain layers license for TruX Corporation, SLT Construction Corporation, and CC Construction.
Second.
Move by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Four, zero, motion carries. Discuss vote, 2022 proposed select board meeting dates. Did anyone have any comments? I know we looked at it last time, but we didn't vote it. I will note that we're continuing to start the meetings at 6:30, unless anybody would like to, you know.
It's fabulous. I have a conflict on March 1st, but I think you could probably move, go on without me that day.
Well, it all depends. If it's an angry mob, you have to be here, anyway.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And please don't be mad.
Oh, no.
Is, right before town meeting, when we were going through all these bunch of things, is there any appetite, or is there any even ability to add another meeting, if it was just via Zoom? For some of these meetings that go so long, just think about it, they go so long, we might have more time to kind of chew over something, and if we had a meeting on a Thursday, you know, March, you know, 3rd or something, that we might be able to meet, knowing that we might want more time. I'm just throwing it out there, maybe not for this time, but it might be, and maybe just do it via Zoom or something, just so we have more time in case, and we can always cancel it. I'm just throwing it out there.
I could be wrong, but I think in the past, if it appears we're getting jammed up, we've added a couple of meetings.
Yeah, we can.
So.
Okay, so you can't, you tell, you said it, and it's over.
No, no, we're just, this is so that we can actually post it on the website, right? People can see the dates and everything. And then if we need to, you know, add some more meetings, because, like I said, we're getting jammed up, then we.
Tony loves more meetings.
Do it. We all love more meetings.
Friday nights are good.
So, but if I could ask the question, maybe Seth? When we have this technology here, I think legally speaking, the board has to be here, Jim, is that right? The board itself has to be in this room, but people can Zoom in if we're.
That's what the plan is for this, yes.
Yeah. So we couldn't have three board members on the other side of the Zoom. We'd have to have at least the forum here, right?
Well, for your remote participation policy, yes, a forum of the board must be present.
Here, in this room.
Yes. The COVID protocols, I believe, were extended, that you can still meet by Zoom.
But that was only till like March 28th or something like that.
Back and look what expires. April next year, I think.
But the point is, this really is more for the convenience of people at home who'd rather not have to come in.
I mean, the board thinks it's more productive, and I agree, to have the board in the room when they have a meeting, as opposed to Zoom. So that's why you've started having your meetings back in person. However, it does drive down our participation. We get much more participation on Zoom. So the thought was, we would be able to do it in a hybrid manner, that you could be here, and people could still Zoom in. If you had to do it on your computers, everybody would have sound coming out of their computers, it just wouldn't work. So this is a way to get the best of both worlds. You'd have to adjust your meeting policy about letting people participate remotely, but people could Zoom into the meeting to participate remotely and still be here and present with the board.
All right. Any other questions? Any liaison reports?
Please, welcome the states.
Oh, all right. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the dates as printed.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor? Aye. Four, zero, motion carries. Liaison reports. Well, last week was a little difficult for liaising, right?
Yes. Well, I'll let you, so Water Resources, they're actually meeting tonight. They're talking about, just as a first, start thinking about the rebate program and the offset program, and they're gonna start finalizing kind of those plans, and I think they'll be coming forward with some ideas and probably some, probably need some resources to kind of get that, to get that going. So just wanted to lay it out there, they'll be, and then Shark is this Thursday via Zoom,